Before we start the work session on our last bill, I would like to make a motion to reconvene from the -- reconvene the previous meeting.
Second.
I need a -- okay. Second by Costello. And I'm doing this because we need to reconsider to add an amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Councilman Costello, sponsor of the bill, could you explain this amendment?
Yes, ma'am. I think we need a vote first on the motion to reconsider.
Okay. Let's take our vote to reconsider. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray, yes. Is it yes? Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Reisinger, yes. And Councilman Stokes. So we have a favorable vote to -- for you to talk about your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Department of Finance approached me after the hearing and pointed out that the March 31st deadline that we had selected in coordination with Finance for the retroactivity piece would only cover eight of the 24 properties that missed out on this credit because of the ransomware and the Estad issues I mentioned. I would like to make a motion to amend Page 2, Line 28 of the bill to strike March 31st, 2019, and replace with July 1, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
His request. Second by Councilman Reisinger. And now we need a vote for this amendment. So Chair Middleton is a yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Motion moved by Costello. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stokes. Moving favorable with amendments. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Reisinger is a yes. And Councilman Stokes is a yes. So again, so we don't have any problems. The bill, this bill, the committee will present this bill in full, to the full council, its second reader on August 19, 2019. So now we are finished with this bill. And now we will have our work session. This morning, the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will have their first work session for Bill 180307, the Water Accountability and Equity Act for the purpose of increasing the availability and affordability of basic water and wastewater services to low-income consumers and assuring a fair process for all customers before the city exercises its authority to cut off water services, impose liens, or take similar action. This bill was introduced on December 3, 2018. The bill was sponsored by former Council President Jag Young. The bill was first heard by the committee on May 16, 2019. There will be no public testimony during this work session. Correspondence was sent to the Department of Public Works requesting all amendments be submitted by July 17, 2019. It's my understanding that no amendments have been submitted by the agency. Is that correct? Are there any present? Director Chow, do we have any amendments? Before I let you -- could you just answer that question first?
Oh, no.
Before we move on, I just want to sit this bottle of water in this carafe up here so we can, all of us in here, can remember to pay attention to the importance of this bill and while we're all here trying to work together for the people of our city. And there are many people, you know, suffering from paying these water bills, particularly the people that are on fixed incomes, people that are just struggling day-to-day, paying for their medications, paying, just, it's, you know, Baltimore is in a crisis all the way around. And water is, it's a natural thing that we have that is produced naturally, basically, by our God. It's not like electricity, it is water that we, that grows plants, feeds our pets, feeds our family. We are required as a human being to consume a certain amount of water today, every day. So, you know, we really need to think hard. You know, I sit up here and as we continue to move forward, and all of this is about water, water that we all need. This is a big step that we're taking here, and we really need to think about everything that we're doing. And on that note, you know, I could go on with many things, but this is the reason we're having this work session, so we can all work together. We know that there's certain policies and procedures that have to be found, but keep in mind Baltimore is in a crisis in many ways, and we can't have people suffering on the simple things like our drinking water, or water that we use to flush our toilets with, or again. It's just so very important, and I want us all to always look at this as we're focusing on and having our discussions. And on that note, we'll start, we're going, we're basically going to, there's going to be several sides making comments, so we're going to have agencies, we'll start with the agencies to share with us your reports, tell us who you are. And I thank you, Director Chow, for personally taking time at your schedule to attend and be a part of this. I'm sure you know how important this is, and I hope your agency really works with the advocates in the council to come up with real, vital, hard solutions. So I want to start with the Department of Public Works and your agency. I don't know how you have that set up. If you want to speak first, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Madam Vice Chairwoman, as well as committee members. Thank you for convening this very first work session on the Water Accountability and Equity Act. As you know, DPW is firmly committed to provide safe, clean, affordable drinking water to all of our residents. To that end, we are in the process of launching of our new Baltimore H2O Assist and Baltimore H2O Plus Assistance Program. Working through the issues caused by the ransomware attack, we started alerting the public to the program that making application available in the able woman starting July 1. As planned, our current enrollee in our senior citizens' water bill assistance as well as hardship exemption program will automatically be enrolled in this income-based BH2O program. Full rollout will include a partnership with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Tisha Edwards is here to discuss the role her office will play and to answer any question the council may have. This office will also, will have the BH2O applications and will provide assistance in rolling their eligible client in the BH2O programs. We are excited about collaboration and working with such experienced and social service-oriented organization. We believe that providing this assistance in the community action center where residents already go for energy assistance enrollments will boost the number of customers joining BH2O after, now, after promoting and launching the BH2O program on July 1, we have passed out 736 applications averaging about 30 inquiries a day. We are committed to make BH2O a success and to grow enrollment in the, in the program. We believe these programs will provide meaningful assistance to our most vulnerable customers by significantly lowering their monthly water bills. I'm grateful for all the support and encouragement we have received from the mayor and his staff regarding to the BH2O program. At this time, I would like to turn over this work session to Deputy Chief of Staff for Operations Cheryl Goldstein in regarding to the concepts of third-party review embodied in the legislation. Thank you.
Does the committee have any questions at this point for Director Chow? Councilman, Councilwoman Clark is not a committee member, but yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Do you have the microphone? We're being televised.
I'm sorry. I'm not looking for an answer at this moment. I'm not a member of this committee, but we have a bill in front of us that has a formula for, based on federal guidelines for poverty. And I'm very familiar with the program you're describing because I've been to briefings in the community about the H2O program. So is Public Works at some point going to have a report? Because these are two different programs, and perhaps they can, they can exist side by side. But in other words, I think that not just the committee, but also the wider council is waiting to see what Public Works is going to say. I'm not asking you to explain now, but will there be a report coming in around that issue?
Yeah, can I defer that question for later on?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not trying to pop the question, but it's a, I mean, it's...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that's the purpose why we're having this work session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Good morning, Chairwoman and members of the committee. My name is Cheryl Goldstein. I'm the Deputy Chief of Oper, Chief of Staff for Operations. So first of all, with, I do want to somewhat address the question that the councilwoman raised in a larger context. You know, part of what we want to do today is give an overview of the work that's being stood up right now with respect to both affordability and accountability. And one of the things that we do want to do is stand them up, learn from them. City Stat will be playing a role in terms of tracking them and being able to see what the impacts are, how many people are being enrolled, what type of assistance is being provided, and, and to be able to also look at, you know, just in terms of implementation, you know, that the implementations of this, of these programs are working. And we're hoping to be able to have information about that prior to the next work session, which I think also will put the department and the administration in a better position to offer amendments, if amendments are appropriate, to the bill based on our implementation and operationalization of these programs. So Tisha Edwards is going to talk more about the BH2O Assist Program and what the partnership looks like and what we're going to be doing with respect to the assistance and affordability. The second piece that I wanted to address was the Department of Public Works has promulgated regulations for an accountability structure that has both an internal appeal mechanism or protest mechanism, but then also will be entering an MOU with the Environmental Control Board. The Environmental Control Board will start hearing complaints and having administrative hearings for people who are protesting their bills. And so that process has been laid out in regulations that have been submitted to legislative reference. We have copies of that here today that we can provide to everybody. And Rebecca would be here, but she is out of town this week, so unfortunately, she's not here and able to talk about, talk about her role in all of that. But it's been something that the agencies have been working on together for, for a number of months to get together. So a lot of this, of course, is, none of this could really happen until we started sending bills out again. And as you know, you know, we've sent postcards out yesterday. We are hopeful to be able to start sending water bills out in August. We're going to be briefing the council about what that looks like. There'll be an announcement to the public with lots of information and details prior to water bills going out. But the goal is to launch, start sending bills, launch BH2O, have the administrative hearing functions stood up, all, you know, as we move forward through the month of August and into September.
Does the committee have any questions for Cheryl Goldstein?
Yes.
Before you do that, I just want to kind of mention that we've been working with the advocates for more than two and a half years now and have tried to, at least on three separate occasions, constructively engage with DPW in the past six months with little to show for it as far as, you know, it's like the D side have been doing a lot of the work, not to mention just all of the other efforts that take place. So that being said, remember, we're, we always have, or we always have to be ready for emergencies. So it's imperative that DPW should be in that same realm and continue to address these emergencies. So...
Can, sorry.
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to acknowledge your concern and also let you know that, I believe it was last week, that Lester Davis and I had an opportunity to meet with members of the advocacy, advocacy community. It's the first time for me, as you know, I've been here for about eight weeks. But it was really helpful for me to hear the concerns that were voiced by the advocacy community. We, there are some folks on my team in the Office of Innovation that are working with DPW and the Office of Children and Family Success around how to make BH2O as widely accessible, available, and customer-friendly as possible. And we've been working, we've, we've just begun to work and engage with the advocacy community to get their input, to try to get client input, and try to develop ways to build a system that is consumer-friendly, client-friendly, and responsive to the needs of the, of the clients in the advocacy community.
Councilman Stokes, do you have a question?
Yes. Ms. Shaw, my question is because of the, some of the inaccurate water bills that the residents are getting, and with the ransomware, is there anything in place in terms of when the new bills go online, when people receive their new bills, is there a safety net down the line in terms of people's property not going into tax sale?
So as, as I understand it, and I feel like there are probably enough people in the room who could correct me if I'm wrong, is after July 1, no one who was a residential customer can be put into tax sale for any water bill non-payment. That's the state law that was passed in the last legislative session. So I don't think that anybody, you know, while there, while certainly there will be payment plans and other opportunities for folks who have trouble paying their water bills, anybody, come July 1, there's no, nobody, no more tax sale for families here to pay water bills.
Okay. Will that information be mailed out to Baltimore City residents? Because a lot of residents probably don't even know that that bill actually passed in Indianapolis. Is there anything?
I mean, we can talk about how to make sure people are aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, so let, let me just say that I'm confused. We seem to be talking about two different tracks. I actually came to this hearing, and the chair and vice chair have been gracious enough to let me sit in and even to speak and to ask questions. And this was about a bill that's been widely discussed and has all kinds of documentation to be presented, I think, today. And what we're now talking about is a, a different program, I think, that, I mean, I know that the difference is in the, the standards and, and process for subsidizing customers of water service. Both very hard work done, one subject to legislation and one to administrative implementation. So are we, are we supposed to, in the city council, figure out which program goes forward? Or is there some feeling that both programs go forward in, on parallel tracks? I'm just trying to put this hearing in context, please.
So Councilwoman, I wouldn't presume to tell this committee what they should do with regards to that. I, what I, what I, what the administration has been moving forward with is standing up the BH2O program, which does have different, has the same intent, but has different eligibility, different financial eligibility and mathematical aspects to it, but is, is, in terms of intent, is a program to provide water assistance, affordability assistance to low-income customers. And so it's something that the administration has worked on, believes can be implemented well, believes can benefit low-income customers, and it's something that we believe that we can operationalize and stand up and, and be successful with and be able to help people with. And so that, we are moving forward to do that and demonstrate that. I think we want to learn from that, learn from client experience with, from that, learn from advocates' experience with that. And then it may be that there's a totally, there may be something between what is in the legislation and what is in BH2O that we all think is a better path forward. I don't know the answer to that at this moment, but that's where, that's what we are doing.
So you're not going to make, you're just going to go ahead and presume that the council is going to go ahead with the legislation, and how it falls out, it falls out, except that from a client customer point of view, it's a dilemma. And from a staff point of view, it's a dilemma. I'm just trying to say, so your intent is to go forward with an administrative program. And so if that's what you're doing, then I think you should talk, there's a couple issues that go with that. For example, you just referenced the idea, which I think is a good one, which the advocates on this bill have already been discussing, which is an independent appeal...
We're going to hear, Councilwoman, we're going to hear from the advocates.
Okay, but, okay, but I...
I do have a member of the committee that wants to discuss.
Okay, I'm sorry. So basically, just to wrap up what I'm saying, is that the last time we had an independent appeal system, it was not legislated, and therefore it was administratively terminated. And so there is, there are benefits to legislation, and I think that we have to keep that in mind. Thank you. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay. You want to respond to that? Or we'll hear from Councilman Reisinger first, has something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cheryl, welcome back.
Thank you.
We go way back.
We do.
I just, first of all, I just want to say that I was kind of impressed on some of the verbiage where you're saying that you're going to do some tracking, partnership accountability, and even you used the word implementation. So what I'm asking is, you kept using the word "we," so I'm asking, what is, what is going to be, what is your role? I know you're deputy...
Sure, so...
And, and the thing is, is your role and what is going to be the structure? Because I know we have our legislative process, but also what is the structure? And are you going to implement anything that's going to involve to work as partnership, the word you used, with the advocates to try to make it a win-win situation?
Good question.
Okay, so, so I guess number one, right, from the, my role as Deputy Chief of Staff for Operations is, under my purview is, among other agencies, is the Department of Public Works, the Environmental Control Board, City Stat. And so with regard to sort of collecting data and sort of managing the implementation, we have talked about and plan on having City Stat work with DPW, the Environmental Control Board, as well as the Office of Children and Family Success to track certain indicators and outcomes so that we know how we're doing and how everything is going, both with respect to BH2O and with respect to the hearings and the accountability mechanism. So there will be, you know, you know, I'm not sure we'll, God knows what we'll call it, but we will have some type of City Stat-type process around all of this that's looking at the rollout and working with all the partners to see what's working, see what needs to be adjusted, and to be able to inform the council about what we're seeing so far in terms of how many people are taking advantage of these two new systems and processes. I, with respect to the advocates, you know, I had what was the first of what I hope is a number of meetings and opportunities to interact with the advocates. I think that their input is hugely important. In the course of the conversation, the first meeting that we had, you know, we talked about, you know, wanting to figure out, you know, getting feedback from them as we stand up these mechanisms to see what the experience is for their clients, what they're hearing, what they're seeing. And so, you know, my view is that, you know, in my role, I can help facilitate that and be a point of contact for the advocacy community, and also, you know, be sort of an honest broker in terms of all the data in order to see what's going on and what's working well, and make sure that all the agencies that are collaborating on this are working together well, and we're getting the results that we all hope to have.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Cheryl? Thank you for taking your time to be a part of this. And I think Tisha Edwards is next.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Middleton and other council members. We are really excited to be a part of this conversation. We envision the Mayor's Office and Children and Family Success to be the vehicle for supporting the families and individuals that you are so concerned about. We have been exploring and are prepared to use our CAP centers as the primary interface for processing the BH2 Assist and BH2 Plus program. This is a resource that is already available and has infrastructure and already supports many of the same exact families and communities around energy assistance, eviction assistance. And so it makes sense to bring the BH2 program into that portfolio of work because the infrastructure is there, and we already have existing resources and existing experience supporting these families. I think what's different about today's conversation, Councilwoman Clark and, and Councilwoman Middleton, is historically, as you've said, that the conversation has been the council, the advocates, and DPW. And I just want to acknowledge DPW for reaching out to our office and asking us to come to the table and to support better implementation and execution of the water assistance programs based on the concerns that the advocacy community has raised.
All that being said, have you had dialogue yet with the advocates in your office as of today?
So not as of today, Councilwoman Middleton. The first kind of interface and, and around this work was through Deputy Chief of Staff Cheryl Goldstein. But what we have said is that we would like to have within this data monitoring and accountability process, we would like to have the advocates to be a part of the work group and for us to collectively have one stakeholder group, which includes... group and for us to collectively have one stakeholder group, which includes DPW, it includes representation from the advocacy community, and it includes our office, working together collaboratively to make sure that we meet the goals that you identified at the onset of this hearing. So we're eager to do that. We see ourselves as part of the solution. It allows us to utilize existing resources. DPW, you should know, has provided a plan and a budget to help us make sure that the CAPs are, the CAP centers can handle the demand, so they are invested in this program. And so we just see it as a great opportunity to get through some of the challenges that historically you have mentioned in terms of creating a conversation and a plan forward that is solutions-oriented.
And we want the council to be a part of that work group.
Sure. Absolutely.
Imperative that we have one or two or many representatives, because I don't want this act to get lost in the shuffle. Are there any questions to?
Judge this.
Yes, Councilwoman.
What if, I don't know what's really evolving here, but we don't have a CAP center in the 14th District.
Yes.
They are not everywhere.
Yes.
And we continually lose out on immediate, on the services they provide and the access they provide.
Yes.
Therefore, I, I don't know where this is all going. I pretty well understand the legislation, and I understand the beginnings of, of the DPW proposal.
Yes.
But I know I don't have a CAP center. And I'm tired of not having a place for especially our young people to go and our elderly to go when everybody's running to their CAP centers. So bring me a CAP center while, while.
And I have a plan.
While you're passing out the money.
We have a plan for that, too.
Buy me a CAP center and everybody else whose district doesn't have one, because it's a great lack, but, and thank you. I, I don't mean to be rude. I'm just aghast. I came for one thing and I'm learning something else, and I'm trying to adjust to parallel tracks and how they run parallel.
So to your comments, I think there are a few things. One is that this administration is trying its best to be responsive and to be solutions-oriented. So I understand that there is a new set of dynamics that the council must take into consideration as you move forward. So I get that process that you're going through in your own mind about what does this mean. The second point I would like to make is you're absolutely right. We don't have enough physical CAP centers in our city based on the need. We all agree with that. And so the other larger issue, because this is not just related to water bill assistance, the larger problem and solution is that we think that the entire CAP strategy can be pushed out to the community in a very different way. And so we have an outreach plan. We think that we can have pop-ups for CAP centers all across the city. We want to engage our libraries as local, as locations to do the work of CAP centers. If we bring technology into the process, a CAP can be anywhere. And so the CAP center model has been limited because it's driven by a paper process and limited by five centers. And I think the five centers should always be hubs, but that does not mean the services and opportunities of CAP centers cannot be much more far-reaching and that we can be much more nimble and, again, using resources that we have, like libraries and other community centers and resources across the city to bring the CAP centers to the community. So I hear your concern. I think it's a legitimate concern in general, and we are going to activate CAP centers in a much more community-centric way, and the locations will not be a limitation for accessibility going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that we're back on task. I now, I think we now want to hear from the advocates. And as you're doing your presentation, I'd like you to respond to your feelings about DPW's BH2 program and also stress what your proposals are as the advocates, and who's going to start? Make sure you state your name and who you represent.
Thank you. I'm Chair Middleton and Vice Chair McCray and the committee members for inviting the Coalition here today. The Baltimore.
Kind of put it.
Why don't you stand up here like everybody else?
Want me to stand up?
Thank you.
So thank you, Chair Middleton, Vice Chair McCray, and members of the committee for inviting the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition here today. We've been working on this issue for more than three years now, trying to solve the widespread persistent problems with our water billing system. Unaffordable and incorrect bills persist to this day. And so I want to, first, I want to, I appreciate the invitation to speak today, and we appreciate the mayor's office for meeting with us about the rollout of the new programs. But we hope that the infrastructure that they're building right now will support the more comprehensive and effective mechanisms proposed in the legislation. We believe that any solution must be codified via legislation before you today. And so we're not going to discuss DPW's proposals today because we want it in writing. And if they're not going to submit it in writing, we don't have anything to discuss with them because we think that we need to have legislation passed, we need to codify the solutions to our water billing system. We saw with the informal conferences that DPW can propose things and then take them away at their discretion. So that's why we want codified language. We want to pass legislation, and if DPW is not prepared today with proposals for amendments, then we don't have anything to discuss with them. But we are all prepared to discuss the Law Department's amendments, and overall, we do find them acceptable. We do appreciate the Law Department for taking the time and actually providing thoughtful feedback and ways that we can make the bill work and implement it in our city. So we really do appreciate the Law Department for their proposed amendments. We have a few concerns that we hope we can discuss today about the Law Department's amendments.
And I do agree with you that we would like to see DPW giving us things in writing at this point. And yes, you have been working on this diligently for three years and over two with us, so they need to step up the plate and start giving us things in writing.
And I don't think there's any excuse for them not to be prepared today. The bill was introduced in December. We met with Rudy Chauvin in October of 2016. So there have been years they've known that this is coming, and we don't find their excuses acceptable.
And the council has been very patient as well, and the former sponsor of this bill. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Who's next?
And right now, Jamie Lee will discuss just some big-picture concerns we have about the Law Department's amendments, just a few things that we do have concerns about, but we overall find their amendments to be acceptable.
Sounds like a first step with the, kind of agreeing with the Law Department's amendments. Is that correct? Go ahead.
Hey, well, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jamie Lee. I'm an Associate Professor of Law at the University of Baltimore, and I speak as a member of the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition. Now, one of the amendments that the Coalition does firmly oppose, that was proposed by the Law Department, is placing the advocates' office within DPW. So we firmly believe that the advocates' office must remain independent and outside the control of DPW, as the original bill states.
The committee agrees with you on that point as well.
Can you talk a little louder?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
For or against what?
I am, we are against the amendment that proposes moving the advocates' office into DPW. We would like it to remain independent and outside the control of DPW.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your, your statement of support on that point. And I'd like to clarify, there are legal reasons why we think it's permissible, and I can talk about that at a later point in the hearing if that's desired. But there are three roles for the advocates' office laid out in our bill, and we believe all three of them need to be independent and outside the control of DPW. So one of the, one of the roles is to informally resolve problems for individual customers. So the advocates' office will talk to customers and DPW, and, for example, try to find and help fix leaks. They'll ensure people know what they owe and when to pay it, right? They'll ensure people know what, actually receive the discounts that they're legally entitled to. So these services are not provided by DPW now successfully, and so an independent office is needed to ensure that they are. So that is one of the roles that the advocates' office will provide. Second, the advocates' office will provide more formal appeals, so in the form of due process hearings where each side can present evidence and testimony. And independence is also very common in those contexts for judges so that they can be impartial. And as Mary pointed out, you know, since the proposal to have hearings in the ECB is new and we don't have anything in writing, we can't really judge whether that would even meet this requirement. And then the third role of the advocates' office and why independence is so critical, this third role is important because just problem-solving one by one with individual customers, it's necessary, but it still leaves the roots of all those problems untouched, right? So that they'll simply repeat themselves as they have for many years now. And so third, the advocate is going to recommend long-term, big-picture solutions to the common customer problems. And I'll be making these recommendations at public hearings before the committee on oversight. DPW can accept or reject these recommendations. We acknowledge that that is their legal right to do that. But if the problems persist and aren't solved, then DPW will be held accountable through the public hearing process before the committee on oversight. So those are the three separate roles of the advocates' office laid out in our bill, and all three of them require independence from DPW. And everyone in this room has heard countless stories of people who have not, who've had such difficulty and frustration, right, in resolving their disputes with DPW. And our public hearings have been packed, and I'm sure you have all heard from many constituents about this. And so what we really need is an independent office to cover all three of these roles, and that's dedicated to solving problems. And we believe that this bill will really only have teeth and meaning if all three of those roles of the advocates' office are independent. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like, we'd like to hear from the city's law department on why you.
Sure.
To amend some of.
All I want is to make sure the hearing officer is considered part of DPW like they were in the past, otherwise they can't see the bills. Under state law, you cannot look at someone's personal financial records, so you'd have an ineffectual hearing officer that would only be able to see a bill if the person consented and made that their designee. And that won't help any tenants or anybody that isn't the owner of the property. You can certainly put language in this bill that says, although they're quote "part of DPW for records custodian purposes," DPW has no ability to touch what they do. They can't direct them. They can't, you can put whatever sort of language you need in there, but if you don't make them part of the record custodian, your office is ineffective. And I couldn't approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency because just like right now, DPW can't send a copy of your water bill to Baltimore Sun. It can't send a copy of your water bill within the city. There is a court of appeals case that says that the same law that applies for records going out of the city applies inside the city. So whatever mag, magic language you want to make sure DPW has no control over the operation of the independent person, that's great. But if you don't make them part of that record custodian, they can't see the bill. That's really the only issue. And in terms of an informal resolution, we're fine with that as long as when it comes time to have a formal hearing, there's nothing that allows the hearing officer to have conversations that aren't on the record because that's a due process problem. So again, I don't think either of these are insurmountable at all from a legal perspective, but you want to make sure they can see the records, and you want to make sure if you have an appellate process, that there isn't a way for the hearing officer to go into a back room, talk to DPW off the record, and then come back in and say something else. I mean, you need it to be a record that's appealable. So I don't think either of those are insurmountable at all. The past informal conference process had an independent person in that they are engaged, they are an independent contractor, just like they had always been. They're not directed by DPW, but they can see the records. And similarly, under the regulations that DPW's going to put forth for their current process, the same thing happened. They're going to hire ECB people, they're going to be independent, but they're going to be a part of that record custodian. The language already exists in DPW's regulations. It could easily happen here. So I don't think it's going to take away anybody's independence.
You have a comment? You can comment. You can, see, you can sit, just speak a little louder.
Thank you.
Right into it.
Aye.
Put it closer.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate the city laws' concerns, and we agree that these are not insurmountable in terms of, yes, we can have customers consent, right, to their records being released to an independent advocates' office. I don't see any legal bar to that. The law, in fact, supports that kind of process. In terms of making it a record custodian, did you say that the rules and regulations would permit that or could permit that?
Sure. All you want to make sure is that this independent officer, who's not directed by DPW, is part of that record custodian umbrella so they can see. I can consent to have my water bill looked at by anyone because I own the property, but what are you going to do for tenants? Their consent is useless, which is why another, you know, change in the Law Department is to make sure that when you're talking landlord-tenant, you're making the tenant the designee of the landlord. That's the magic language you need to get over that state law hurdle. It's not insurmountable. It's not going to result in lack of independence, but otherwise, they can't see the bill. And when I say can't see the bill, it's a crime under Maryland law to let out people's financial information. And I couldn't counsel DPW or anybody else to commit that crime. So I'm just saying there's a way around it. It just needs to be put into the bill.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Okay. Councilwoman Clark, you would like to comment on?
If I may comment on that, I agree that there can be independence.
Any comments?
Under all the Law Department's concerns, because we did have it with the informal conferences. It was a third-party contractual master would come in or mistress. It was, you know, both. And there was a room over there on the fourth floor, and in that room, it was a big room, that was the hearing room, and there would be a Public Works employee whose job it was simply to bring records up on the screen as the master or the customer was discussing them. Okay? In other words, so, and then the decision of that master, well, first of all, that part, that condition would have to be part of legislation because it disappeared administratively, the whole thing, but it worked very well. And Public Works had done a very fine job of scheduling people so they didn't have to wait a long time. They scheduled them like maybe every hour so that, not every morning, if you get what I mean, that, and then you also need legislated the next chain of appeal, which should be to the circuit court. Again, not within the agency. See what I mean? So they already have done this. It's not, it wasn't legislated, so it's got to be legislated to be ongoing. But I think that, I think that Ms. Ruley and you could probably work it out real well, that everybody would feel good about the independent nature of it and the legality, and I'm sure the circuit court would love it, too.
Thank you. Do you have any more comments on?
Thank you very much. I, I would like to just say, we would need to really see what the proposal is before we can opine whether it would meet our. we can opine whether it would meet our, our standard of independence or not. So, I just want to reserve that. And we do have some, we, we have a response on some of the tenant issues, if you'd like to hear about that now.
The next person, okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, thank you Chairwoman, Vice Chair.
Middleton.
Equal Rights.
Yeah. Let me head over there.
Could you?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you. I'm Zafar Shah, attorney at the Public Justice Center and on behalf of the, the Right to Water Coalition, as it was stated, we generally agree on many of the provisions in the Law Department's amendments. The, the just referenced amendment to the lease requirement section in the Housing Article, Section 7-3, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's any disagreement with the Law Department's addition providing designation under the MPIA. It's a, a very good addition. However, in the, the amendment, the proposed language actually is a limitation on what records a tenant would be able to access as the designee. So, in the, the bill as introduced, the phrase is account records, meaning the tenant should be able to get, under the authorization of the lease agreement between the landlord and tenant, would be able to access any records having to do with the account. Now, that's important because there's not just a, a need for tenants to access the copy of the bill. That's a huge need. And that actually was partly addressed in state law in the prior, a prior session, 2018. But you, a tenant would also need sometimes consumption history or information about investigations at the meter, about construction and shut-off. There, there are just additional types of documentation that a tenant sometimes needs to understand why the bill says what the bill says. This is in 7-3.
It's going to have a page.
I think it's the second page of the bill.
Oh.
Councilwoman, if I may not interrupt, it's page seven of my amendments on the very top page and I have no issue with changing it. Make them a designee for whatever you need to see.
So, you could say all account records.
Fine.
The, the issue is just that in the first reader version of the bill, the, the authorization in the lease language would be for the tenant to access account records at DPW. They can't currently do that because they're not the account holder and first reader allows them to access all those records by dint of the lease. Now, the, the Law Department's change, changed that to, you know, include the MPIA information, but only to access copies of the bill. And I'm, I'm only suggesting, this is a very simple meeting of the minds here, that it be a designee accessing account records rather than just the copy of the bill. Makes sense?
Yeah. Madam, could I ask?
Yes. Councilwoman Clark.
So, do you have an amendment to the amendment? So, just like what we're saying, things need to be in writing, so-
Sure.
I'm not a member of this committee, but I'm a member of the council, so I know I'd like to see it the next time around so we could actually see what it says and think about it.
I think it would be great if the Advocates have a meeting with the Law Department to try to formalize and get that amendment, get the amendments together.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We're, we're going to be thrilled to do that. I promise you.
Yes. And Hillary, that would work with you?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I have, I've written the language right here, so I'm happy to share that whenever you want it.
Thank you so much.
And slightly off from the Law Department's amendments, in this section, at the time the bill was submitted for first reader, there had been a, from our coalition, a proposal to further add language to Section 7-3 of the Housing Article. And that language would address what a landlord must include in the written lease for multifamily dwelling renters whose water bill is portioned or allocated to them according to some formula. And so, we would like to also see additional language and I, I think it was the intent of the former council president to include in this bill that the leases require, have to include language that describes what the allocation formula is and also present exactly what the method would be for billing by allocation. And then thirdly, also in the lease, present what the, the estimated usage was or the actual usage was in the prior tenancy for like, you know, 12 months and then establishing what the highest bill was, what the lowest bill was. Because there is a, a significant transparency problem with ratio utility billing for, for tenants in those properties. They often sign leases, don't understand exactly what the bill is going to be for water. DPW wouldn't be able to tell them that information. And so, it's really, it's just closely held information for the landlord that should be disclosed before a tenant signs a, a term lease. So, my, my final message here is that I think the Law Department has raised a lot of questions about the nature of a tenant having an account or having, having been defined as a customer in the proposed legislation here. So, in general, this bill was drafted cognizant that DPW strongly opposes the concept of tenants as a customer. We know that many jurisdictions have customer-based billing and this bill would likely be cleaner, in some senses, less confusing at first glance if the council were to add customer-based billing to this legislation. That would fix a lot of, I think, some of the complexities in defining what tenants can do in terms of a credit and in terms of dispute resolution. But that's, I think, something at this point that we look to the council to propose as an amendment. Even with customer-based billing, there still would have to be deliberation about how to, how to treat single-metered properties versus the master-metered properties. We don't have data in our coalition, we don't have the data from DPW about the breakdown of how many master, or how many, how many residents are living in a master-metered property. That's crucial information because I think that, you know, forty, forty percent of rental properties are single-family homes. Very likely, they're single-metered properties. And so, by including those customers into this legislation as account holders, we're, we're really increasing the, the equity in this bill to include all those renters. But it's only forty, you know, forty percent probably of all the renters we could be impacting. If we want to get everybody into the bill, we have to figure out this kind of tough nut to crack of how, how do we get the, the multifamily ratio utility build tenants not only into the affordability scheme, that's in this bill, but then also how does the customer advocate, advocate for disputes when there's a dispute about the allocation itself? And I think that the suggestion has been to date that landlord/tenant issues are just contractual issues that have nothing to do with Department of Public Works, but we've put forward a vision for a customer advocate that can help all customers and all residents with access to water. And so, there has to be some tools in the toolkit for that individual, that customer advocate, to assist the customers in those multifamily ratio utility build properties because ultimately, that water is coming from the city. It's not the landlord's water, although, you know, the landlord in those properties has paid the account and then allocated the bill. So, I think that, that would be a substantial conversation to have, probably in a next work session.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have one more advocate, please.
There was one other Law Department amendment that we wanted to give some feedback on as well as, if this is the proper time, I also wanted to give feedback on the amendment that was proposed by the Finance Department regarding tax sales and the tax sale interest rate. So, I'll, I'll start with the, the Law Department amendment. There's a section, it's Section 2-23 and 8-4 of the bill, undisputed bills are not considered unpaid. The reason we put that in, the reason we thought that that was important, was that we feel that there needs to be, while the advocate is working with the customer, some kind of a mechanism to stop, to stop any kind of collection methods from going forward on bills that are in dispute. So, like, there's a disputed bill, we're trying to figure out what's going on with that bill, how much does the customer actually owe? We, we feel that, that there needs to be kind of like a hold on that situation until that process is resolved and that there's actually a conclusion about how that, much that person owes. So, that whole section was struck from the, from the bill and maybe the Law Department has some feedback about like-
I'm just trying to find it at the moment. Is it about the liens?
The, the end, towards the end of your 2-23 and 8-4 and I'm trying to, let me look and see what-
Okay, and let me see, I think that's-
Page thirteen, thirty.
Um-
Where's the other one? Where's the first?
Right. I, I think that, that this is the language about the liens.
That was part of it.
Right. So, state law dictates the lien stuff. We don't really have any role in that. I mean, as, as was testified earlier, they just came in the last session and modified that again. So, I mean, we couldn't put any language in this bill that would conflict with the state law, which is what it is right now.
Yeah, and I, I had a, I had a feeling that that was why you had struck some of that section. We, there were two paragraphs that were about liens and tax sales and then there was one paragraph that just said that the, may not be considered unpaid or in arrears. We think we could leave that first paragraph and potentially take out the, the sections that you had struck about liens and tax-
Actually, the Charter says anything unpaid is a lien. I mean, that's, that's the problem with the language is that, that is a section written by state law. I mean, that would be, that would be the-
Right.
-General Assembly to change that.
I'm familiar with that section. The other thing though, that I, I think we could look at is in the Baltimore City Code, Article 24, Section 1-2C, which is not part of this bill, but is the part of the, the City Code that allows water to be, charges to be liens. I think if we, if we want to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here, we could strike that section and that would-
Unfortunately, Annie, if you don't pay the bill, it's still a lien. I mean, whether you take, that language is redundant of the state law, so you feel free to take it out, but under state law, an unpaid bill is a lien. So, I mean, I don't have, I mean, you could certainly, DPW and Finance Department now will often not execute, you know, they won't necessarily, you know, go after someone if that's the right word. And certainly, state law now prohibits that, but I can't legally make it no longer a lien because that's just a creature of state law. I mean, I think you're looking at maybe language about, about how to deal with, with liens in that situation, maybe.
And I understand we can't affect the tax sale and the parts of it that are state law, but we, we have to come up with some language that makes it such that whatever internal collection mechanisms, not tax sale, are not going forward while the disputes are being heard.
That's fine.
The other thing about tax sale is the Finance Department had introduced, had an opposed part of the bill that changed the tax sale interest rate for owner occupants from 12% to 5%. We do oppose that amendment. We, we think that, that, that is really not the main, the main reason that, that these investors are purchasing these properties at tax sale. I've been working on tax sale issues for several years now and from what they have told me themselves, they're, the main way they make money in these tax sales is by collecting attorney's fees and some of the other fees that are, that are permitted to them under state law. And they, when we changed the interest rate in Annapolis from 18% to 12% for owner occupants, they in fact did not strongly oppose that because it really didn't affect their bottom line very much compared to the other money that they're bringing in from attorney's fees. So, we don't believe that changing the interest rate is really going to have a very strong effect on whether purchasers are interested in participating in tax sale. So, for that reason, we, we oppose that, the amendment that the Finance Department had suggested.
Thank you for your, for your comments. So, jot it down here that there, there, there are some things that need to happen, I guess, before we have our one additional work session and schedule that. It looks like the Advocates have to, basically, the Advocates and the Department of Public Works, along with now Family and Support Services, Family Children Support Services, there also needs to be meetings with the Law Department and the Advocates to really hone in and work together on, you know, our concrete laws and, and try to get that together. And I think there, through all of that, you need to codify some type of amendments with DPW that needs to be taken to legislative reference before, and I'd like all this done before we have our next work session. So, we'll, the Advocates and this committee will have conversation as well as we move forward. Are there any more comments or questions from DPW or the Office of the Mayor or any of the agencies or the committee at this point?
Good to hear.
Thank you, Councilman Reissinger. So, at this point, the committee will go back into recess and will announce one additional work session date at the, at a, at the next council meeting that takes place in August, correct?
When's that?
August 19. I'll be announcing when the next work session will take place. So, it sounds like it, has, we have some work to be done with DPW, Family and Support Services, the Law Department and the Advocates and co-coding the agreed amendments to bring to the next work session. Thank you all for participating again on this important-
Thanks for that.
-natural, natural process and, and the natural thing, water that we drink and we need to live and survive every day. This hearing is in recess.